Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vator City Council. It is 6:05 PM on Thursday, May 10th, 2023. Excuse me, Wednesday, May 10th, 2023. Roll call. Here. Jason is not here.
Yes. My question?
Yes. President.
Excellent. Of course. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. A reminder, there are still a couple of vacancies on the planning committee. Have those interested candidates get a hold of us so we can get them, get them on the committee. There's a lot of interesting work that's going to be coming up for them. And in a road, we still haven't yet heard back from the county yet regarding their consideration to abandon their agreement, their East American. More, more to come later on. The property purchase on Highway 506 was completed as of yesterday, so you got just a little. It's exciting. We'll be able to utilize that for years to come. 10th Street widening, Mr. Parsons mentioned that last week, talking about, talking to Lewis County about possibly widening 10th Street when they do the waterline expansion project over there. I'm actually have a meeting tomorrow with the Public Works Manager for Lewis County out there to walk the site and see if we can come up with a plan for that later in the year. Reminder, there's a public hearing set for June 7th for the six-year TIP. So our calendars on that one, that's a regular city council night. A little new information, Fire District 20, they are going to have a levy on the August ballot to increase their levy amount from the current 41 cents to at all 35, so. Thousand on your property value. This will enable them to have 24/7 coverage, the fire station, which they do not have now. In fact, it's not, it's not a manned fire station at all, and they do not have volunteers like they used to. And so our calls are frequently, pretty much always now, coming from, responses coming from Windlock or Toledo, eight to 15 minutes away, longer if there's a train. And so this would resolve that issue, give us 24/7 coverage. And so I would highly recommend that you spread that information and let people know that this is a good thing. If it were to fail, our protection class would change from a Class 6, which your insurance ratings are based on, to a Class 8 or 9. If you go, we've gotten quotes from insurance agents, if we go to a Class 8 or 9. The levy were to pass, your insurance will go up that much. So there is no vote no and save money, like a lot of taxes are concerned. If you vote no, it will probably cost you more than if you were to vote yes and have the levy pass. So a little different situation this time. More information to come, come about that. Yes? You're flashing me.
I just did some quick math.
Yep. Enough for what you're getting out of it. May Day, May Day was a great success. There were hundreds of people out there and they all had a good time, so congratulations to the volunteers that made that happen. It was a, it was a great festival. And a notice, Highway 506 is going to be closed at the railroad crossing here in town next week from the 15th through the 18th, starting on the 15th and ending on the 18th. Burlington Northern is going to be doing some crossing work there, and so it will be closed, so make alternative. Route plans if you intend to go to Little Crane, I guess. All right, moving on to council reports. Members of the council have anything to report?
No.
The track's bar, got its rain pit ventilation system started to go into the.
We're a little bit closer to being able to have a margarita in Vator.
A little bit closer, and I want to tell you, it's a really nice facility. They always have invested in that. Today we put all the grab bars in the back and wastebasket receptacle things, stainless steel.
Excellent. Good, good to see another business here in town.
Yeah.
Any other council reports? Okay, moving on to agenda approval.
I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda as written for 10, 2023.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda. We have a second. Second by Mr. Ferguson. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
Motion approved in city council meeting minutes from 4/26, 2023.
The motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve the council minutes from April 26th. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Make a motion that we approve the vouchers for the first of May 2023 at $91,678.66. Amended end of April 2023 for $38,632.13.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second? Second of Mr. Ferguson. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports, Lewis County Sheriff's Department.
Good evening.
Hello?
April, there were a total of 349 citizen contacts, 12 service calls, or calls, two of which were indefinitely dedicated to the city of Vator. Eight traffic stops resulting in one infraction, and then there was a warrant arrest for felony. It worked a little bit. Any additional questions?
Thank you for coming out during May Day. It's always great to see everyone out there walking around and. Control and making your presence known, so.
Thank you for spreading the cloud a little bit.
You didn't need that raincoat the entire time.
But if I took it off, it would have ridden. I was helping you.
Warding off the weather. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to city business. First thing we're going to cover is the public hearings, plural, for the annexation requests. The first public hearing at 6:13 PM for the Zero Park Place and Zero Park Road. Is there any members of the public that would like to comment on the intent to annex these properties into the Vator City Limits? All right, I'll ask one more time if there's any members of the public that would like to offer comments regarding the intent to annex Park Place and Park Road into the city limits. All right, hearing none. This public hearing is closed at 6:14 PM. And I will open the second public hearing at 6:14 PM for the following annexation request of Zero Ananen Road. Is there any public comment for the intent to annex the property at Zero Park Road, otherwise formerly known as, or currently known as the other, the larger portion of McMurphy Park? Any members of the public want to comment on the intent to annex on Ananen Road?
These are all home by the city.
Correct.
And not in season.
That's correct. All right, hearing, no public comment. We'll close this public hearing at 6:15 PM. And we open the third public hearing for the annexation request for the, should be two addresses actually, not just the one that's shown on the agenda. Let's see. They are. Flipping through papers. There we go. Open this public hearing for the two parcels, both on Zero State Route 506 at 6:16 PM. In case I haven't done that yet. Is there any members of the public that would like to comment on the intent to annex for the two parcels on Zero State Route 506? I'll ask again if there's any members of the public that would like to comment on this intent to annex. Hearing none, I close this public hearing at 6:16 PM. Thank you to all the members of the public that chose to share their information regarding the intent to annex. All right, now that's behind us. Moving on to item number two, council to consider submittal of intent to annex for Vator Annex Station 2301 to the Boundary Review Board. This would be the 2301, or again, these are city properties. These are the ones on the south side of town on Park Road. Like a motion if anyone's interested in.
Or if you have any questions.
Annex 2301.
Oh, of course. Thank you, Melissa. If there's any questions as well, but.
These are, these are properties that the city owns that are not in the city limits.
Correct, yeah, there's.
We're just incorporating these properties that were gifted to the city so that we can utilize them in the same reciprocal fashion.
That's correct. There's no reason to have. Into the city limits. For instance, McMurphy Park is a great example. The, the, the creek side of McMurphy Park is in county. If the city were to go to, say, build a bathroom down there, we would need to go get building permits from the county to build on, on a city park.
Yeah.
It's kind of ridiculous.
Yeah.
So we should, and the reason why we're doing all of it, there was a private request to do private property. Properties, and if we're going to do an annexation, let's just do it all at once. Please re-say the motion.
So I make the motion that we annex the Zero Park Road 2301.
Can I really? Can I really quickly make a comment? Annex 01 is actually for McMurphy Park?
Oh, 01 is for McMurphy Park?
Yes.
Let me get those correct. I have. I have them right here.
Also, just as a side note, it's not a, it shouldn't be a motion to annex the parcels right now. It's a motion to consider submittal of an intent to annex, which essentially we're submitting the intent to the Boundary Review Board, and they will review it and finalize everything. And then we will come back together and officially do it and then send it back to them, if that makes sense. I can further explain the process.
A motion to.
I make the motion that we send the annex of 2301 to the Boundary Review Board.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to send the annexation 2301 to the Boundary Review Board. This is the Zero Ananen Road.
Second property.
We have a first and a second. Any other discussion? Excuse me, we have a. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those of approving the intent to annex and send to Boundary Review Board, annexation 023-01, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to city item, business item number three, council to consider submittal of an intent to annex for annexation 23-02 to the Boundary Review Board. And for clarification, 02 are for the Park Road properties.
I motion that we approve the submittal, the intent annex, annex. The Boundary Review Board.
The motion by Mr. Ferguson to the submittal to an intent to annex for annexation 2302 to the Boundary Review Board. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. McIntosh. Further discussion? None. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to number four, council to consider submittal of an intent to annex for annexation 23-03 to the Boundary Review Board. For clarification, 03 are these take right 506 properties owned by the Olsons and the.
I'll make a motion that we submit an intent to annex for annex 2303 to the Boundary Review Board.
The motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the submittal of intent to annex for 2303. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hall. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for dealing with the mouthful of everything that needed to be said to be. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number five, council to consider resolution 08-2023 Civil West Amendment Number 6 to the wastewater treatment plant bidding and construction services. So this item numbers, number five on the council business and number six, the Rovlin's Change Order, go hand in hand. There was money left over in the grant funding from the wastewater treatment plant, and we were, we talked to the grant administrators, and they agreed that the damage to A Street between 8th and 9th could be repaired using those grants, excess grant funds. So great news, we can fix a road and not have to pay for it. But Civil West's contract that we had did not cover enough of the expenses that are going to be required to handle that engineering work. And so this amendment to their contract allows them to have enough funds left over to do the engineering work on that road. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Use the grant money to pay the road.
Yep. And so, and Civil West needs to have a contract amendment to be able to do that work, which wasn't in their original contract.
So, yeah, I looked at the bid estimate briefly here. The, the Civil West contract we're talking about right now.
Yeah, this would be the, so this would be the, so yeah, there's two parts, right, the Rovlin, right, so this is for the civil, our engineer that's going to oversee the project.
It's from 506 to.
No, it's just from 8th to 9th, the 400 feet. But yeah, so first part would be a contract amendment with Civil West to be able to handle the extra work. That's what this is for.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 08, 2023, Civil West Amendment Number 6 wastewater treatment, bidding and construction services.
The motion by Mr. Parsons to approve Resolution 08-2023, the Civil West Contract Amendment Number 6. Do we have a second?
Sir.
Second by Mr. Ferguson. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, this is the second part of the, getting the street work done. Rovlin's Change Order Number 12 in the amount of $121,453.99. And so obviously Rovlin's is the contractor that did the, all the work down at the wastewater plant. And so it's a simple matter of doing a change order with them to include the, the road work. And again, all this is covered by excess grant funds, so it's not going to come out of the city's. I guess it all comes out of our taxes eventually, but you know what I mean, so. So Mike, you were saying you had some, some questions about the change order?
He answered that, so it's, it's just from 8th to 9th Street.
Just from 8th to 9th, the 400 feet. So that's a lot.
It seemed like a lot.
Yeah, so they're going to rebuild the road, so they're going to completely take, take the asphalt off, they're going to grade it down, and they're going to rebuild the road.
I read you that part, it's three inches. It's three inches and two lips.
Yes.
They're going to do an inch, I, I read, it's inch and a half, you know?
And then there was like six inches of base and then another, another, another layer on it, so it was mobile. And then asphalt on top of it.
Yeah, I just, I mean, uh just the asphalt part of it, you look at Lakeside's portion of it, it's like 34,000, and then that gets chalked up to, you know?
And the other 90-ish was.
Forty something thousand.
Is all the digging and the, and the gravel and the grading and all that.
For one block, one segment.
Yep.
So they.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, so if I came and worked at your, you know, you got, everybody knows I'm a general contractor, but I can work at your house and to do on, you know, on your house, and my equipment messes up your yard, I just leave it, and then that's up to you to come up with money or away, or, you know, like, fix that? Or, or is it actually on me? Is it contracted, like, make it right?
So here's the, here's the, here's the flip side. So it's the city's responsibility to have roads that are designed and maintained in such a way that their rigs should have been able to get in there without damaging them. We didn't request them to have overweight permits or anything like that. And so, you know, an overweight permit, if they were to damage the road, we would have overweight permits, and we could use that money to supposedly fix the road in the future.
So wait a minute, so it's the city's job to make sure that the roads are safe for equipment so that the equipment doesn't damage the road?
Well, the idea, like, say, for instance, like the dump truck, or the, excuse me, the garbage trucks here in town, the May's trucks, right? The May drivers aren't roads and they damage the roads. We should have roads capable of handling the garbage trucks.
Yeah.
I'm being devil's advocate here, but that's the way it works.
Yeah, kinda, I guess. That's what I can leave there too, different things.
This comes down to, do you, do you want to get the road fixed for free or not?
Yeah, I, I think. Part of the road, and then we can fix the rest of the road all the way up to 506.
I, I, and I'm not, okay, so I understand that, you know, the money sitting there that's left over. We have no more construction costs. There's going to be no more change orders coming from them for a new piece of equipment.
No, we're about ready to wrap the, the whole thing up. Actually, we sent the, what's that last document you sent? Substantial completion.
Yeah, yeah.
Sent that off already and again.
So then this would just be us going into a whole new thing, a new contract with.
Well, no, we, we were able to, we're able to add this on right at the end here, right? Without having to do a whole new contract, without having to go out for bid, without having to. And then the other issue was after, would we be able to, would the grant administrators allow us to do a whole nother separate bidding? I, I don't know. I would rather not find out.
I guess I'm rushing that a little bit. Go ahead, Mike. Make a motion that we approve Rovlin's Change Order Number 12 for $121,453.99.
The motion by Mr. Parsons to approve Rovlin's Change Order Number 12. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hall. Further discussion?
1.1, look real nice, like cars, like when Lightning McQueen is done.
I actually, when I was sent him an image of the road and it, like, Vader saying, I want to be the first one to drive on the road. It's going to be, it's going to be nice to ride down.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Anyway, all right. We got more work to do, man.
Hey, we want to fix roads and.
We'll get this done.
This, this was an angle we were able to take to get that portion of the roads fixed.
Yeah, good job, good job. We did work the angle.
Any other discussion? No, all right. All those in favor of approving Rovlin's Change Order Number 12, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I don't know if the timeline was on there, but they were thinking towards the end of this month, May, they were going to get rolling on that, so. Expect a new road here soon. For seven, council to consider Resolution 09, 2023, Parks Board's appointments. So up for our code, Parks Board and Planning Committee. Seats are a three-year appointment, and they do come up for reappointment at designated times. A while back when we set this whole resolution thing up, we set it up so that they would expire at the end of May to help us remember to reappoint them at, when they, when they expired, and so it didn't, doesn't line up with, with council election seasons in January and stuff like that, so. In any case, there were two members of each of the Parks Board that were expiring. And so Victoria Parsons on the Planning Committee and Scott Gross on the Parks Planning Committee, they're both excited to be reappointed and, excuse me, I'm backwards, you're right. And then on the, I guess I'm lumping them together in my head, but, and then on the Parks Board, Kelly Shy and and Ken Jawsland, thank you, were expiring, and so I am submitting them, all the Parks Board members, to you for reappointments to their positions. They've done good work for the city. They keep coming up with new projects and new community service. They've been getting parks built and.
Resolution 09-2023 for Parks Board's appointments.
A motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution 09-2023 for the Parks Board appointments. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Ferguson. Hey guys, my cue has stopped talking. Hearing none. All those in favor of resolution 09-2023 for the Parks Board's appointments, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number eight, council to consider resolution 10-2023, Planning Committee Appointments. This will be for Scott Gross and Victoria Parsons. Same thing, they have agreed to be reappointed.
Make a motion that we approve resolution 10-2023, Planning Committee Appointments.
A motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution 10-2023 for the Planning Committee Appointments. Do we have a second? Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Last item, City Business, council to discuss F Street rededication status. All right, so you got in your packet a the, all the properties along F Street and those responses that we've gotten so far. Majority of responses back from folks, I would say it's kind of split between the guesses, the no responses and the no's and the undecideds, so. What we were really hoping for with this was that we'd get a unanimous yes from everybody. And then we could go through with the, with rededicating F Street. Obviously, there's survey work and everything. But if we have people saying no, especially a lot of people saying no, you know, to get that property, if they're not willing to give it to the city, you know, willingly, you know, we'd be on the hook to pay for property. There'd be all kinds of issues regarding forcing them to do it if they didn't want to do it. You know, personally, to me, this is something that I, I'm not really interested in doing it. It was really as more of a, I'm not sure, a favor to the residents back there, but that's kind of, it was their request.
They came in with the civil issue that they were dealing with. They had a gift from the city that, you know, maybe it wasn't appropriate properly with the, you know, deed of easements and things like that, that tried to come up with awkward a solution and they don't want to do it.
Yeah, some of the same folks that, that came to this meeting in person to say they wanted it have changed their mind, it would seem.
Yeah.
And, and so you know, I have no interest in forcing people to give their property to the city. And quite frequently, frankly, we don't have the, the, the money to start paying people for, for this, for this property and stuff. Kathy, yes. Yes, well, that's, that's the idea, yeah, is that's, that's the issue back there is that there is no city, city right of way through there. And so, yeah, they all own portions of the road, basically, the driveway, I guess you would call it.
Yeah, so what was mapped is, as F Street, when it got to those last few parcels, it just, you know, the city gave it up to the people.
Back in, yeah, the story is back in the 90s or so, early 90s, the residents back there wanted to maintain that road. The city wasn't maintaining it for them. And so the residents approached the city, the city and the city said, well, fine, if we'll, we'll give up our right of way and you all can maintain that as a private drive. And so that's what happened. And all, now all those folks are and the people that are there, some of them aren't maintaining the road. Luckily, they have a resident back there that has the means and the will to do it. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. And does it for the neighborhood. But there's been a variety of issues where the city can't enforce codes on the roadway. If someone parks their car on it and blocks, block, blocks it, the city really can't do a whole lot about it because it's not our, it's not our property, so.
And they can, you know, go sweeping in and out of there and spitting gravel everywhere.
Private property.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if there's issues back there, they need to go to a court and talk with a judge and things like that. So it's a, it's a big hassle. And so, you know, the and, you know, take ownership of it, just like every other road in town. Have a proper right of way through there and that we could enforce rules and they could have all the same, the same privileges as everyone else. It seems unlikely.
Places from like FedEx or UPS, especially the big trucks, and they get someone down on park that did something and instead of being able to circle around like the old days, they get a backup, turn around.
Absolutely. Garbage service is the same way. He's got it down and turn around.
We've heard about it, yeah. Yeah, so, but in any case, you know, we don't have a resounding yes. And so my recommendation to the council is that unless people change their tune, we don't do anything. And they can just keep, keep having, maintaining their own road and go about it.
People that want, came here, said they wanted it, said no. Unbelievable, right?
We actually got letters from people's attorneys in response. We've got some hateful messages on the, on the answering machine, all kinds of stuff, so.
Can I ask them, you probably know because you bought a lot of that property, didn't this young guy, Ian, come in and like clear a way, dirt or whatever, gravel and put those little single lives, three or four ones, that you guys all tore down? Did he have to go with the, the city, you don't need permits to put the houses in, but they say, put a road in, what did the city say? Well, that'll be on a road, we'll put it in and you put your houses in. People really get to have the whole road as their private property when they put?
It's been, the biggest issue on it is people parking in the middle of the road because they're just being obnoxious about it and rude to their neighbors and not being able to do anything about that. As far as making that, it's not that big of a deal. Most of when I do it, they help out, but it's, it's just a it's, my main focus for it was to have the ability to have law enforcement take care of issues besides us taking care of issues between each other because that doesn't always turn out. Yeah. So I, myself, could care less. I'll maintain my section of it and I'll put a fence up. I can now, I can put a fence up wherever I want, right up through the road, so they have a pole. Like a good neighbor, stay over there.
What happens if they all find out, they have property goes down into the road like a baby and they all start putting in, you know, blocking
Well, you, you shouldn't be able to block somebody from getting to their house. There are
ingress and egress easements associated with those properties. And so
There are.
Yeah, there are. Yeah, there's some stuff on the, on the books about that. But again, the city is not able to enforce them. You, the folks need to go talk to a judge to get it taken care of. And instead of just being able to call the city and say, hey, there's a road, someone blocking the road. So again, yeah, our hands are kind of tied when it comes to that because it's personal property issues, right? You can, but what are you going to say, Mr. Phrase?
I'm going to say, if it was a city street, I could go up there, tell them to move it out, I call a tow truck and tow their car. On private property, if they say no, I say, we'll have a nice day.
Oh my goodness.
It's crazy. That's the stuff that makes people smart, right?
Yeah. So, so unless council has any other a, a will above just letting this go, you know, certainly we can, we can, we'll probably send another letter to folks and let them know what the consensus was. That way they can relax, but get them, unless they come again and decide to change their tune. We've got other things that we can worry about.
Yeah. I'm just trying to put this to rest for a little while.
Oh, we have a motion to rest. I don't think we need to go any further on that. I ain't good. I know what you're putting down. Hey, I got, let's do it all the way. We have a motion by Mr. Ferguson's to table the F Street rededication issue. Yeah, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hall. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to public comment. Any members of the public have anything to say tonight? No? Elected official comment?
We have, we have some recent break-ins. People have their property stolen, Mike?
Yeah, I had some equipment stolen from my property.
Was it locked in anything?
It was in my shed. So they had to come down the driveway around the corner. Into the building.
And it's wanted anybody to keep an eye open.
And then actually, a neighbor across the street got his house broken into while he was gone. He did not report it, so there's a thing. Everybody report these things.
Yeah.
Because if they arrest some guy and he has
Who?
Oh, I don't want to say it here, but if they arrest some guy and he has one of their pieces of stuff that he's stolen, yeah, then the cops will know about it. Yeah, so.
Yeah, you never know. I mean, I know that, you know, if some things are stolen that are unique, you know, it's easy to see that stuff on the, on our open marketplace, you know?
You guys have any idea, but I've been
Your classic.
I've, you know, I've told this story, I don't know if I've told this story here, but I came out of church one day and I saw somebody looking through a window of a car and I asked him if I could help him. In a car, took off. I got their license plate and reported it to the city police. So this was in California. They ended up closing 150 open cases because they went to the person's house, found stolen property and their whole garage was full of stolen stuff. So the people that reported it were able to get their stuff back, so.
Sold a bunch of crimes.
Yeah. So report your stuff.
I'm still looking for my inflatable Darth Vader.
Somebody stole that?
Yeah, it was two years ago. So they stole it.
Are you sure the wind didn't get it?
I, I have them on footage stealing it, on camera, stealing it in the middle of the night.
Kids or?
No.
No?
Tiredy rotten Vader stealers.
So if you see a 20-foot-tall inflatable Darth Vader holding a lightsaber that looks like a candy cane, call me.
I was wondering why it didn't today, man, though.
Or why it went down so early in the season?
Yeah.
All right. Any other elected official comment? Meeting is adjourned at 6:48 PM. Thank you.